The party is just not in my house. My name is Dawn Danko, so I'm Chair of the Board and I'm the trustee for Ward 7, which is the Central Mountain area. I'll turn it over to trustee Fairman.
Hi, everyone. I am Amanda Fairman. I am trustees for Ward 11 and 12.
Hello, everyone. My video is doing some weird things, but I'm Gran Noble, trustee for Ward 15.
Great. Do we have any other trustees with us?
I think that's all that's here right now, Donna.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Thank you all for joining us. And the reason I wanted, as I said, I wanted to discuss this is I received a number of phone calls and emails from parents who are concerned about the policy. They feel that the bottom line is regardless of how the content of the policy, which I'd like to discuss, but regardless of the policy itself, they feel like they were left out of the equation, left out of the decision to move forward with 5.4. So with your involvement, I'd like to move forward with some of the questions that have been raised by parents. And I'll start with, I guess, the first one would be, how did the board, when did you make the decision to implement Policy 5.4? And how did you communicate this with parents, to parents?
I'll start. I think I can answer that. So I have to clarify, this is not a policy. This is a procedure. And so while trustees set policy and we've approved our Human Rights Policy, or I believe it's actually got a different name back in the spring, that's very high level, right? So that is, we will follow the Ontario Human Rights Code. It sets up the guiding principles for what we will do at the commitments we make as a board. But it doesn't get into granular details about how that happens at the school level. Procedures are set by staff. They are not approved by trustees. They are not vetted by trustees, but they flow out of the policy. So this procedure was developed by staff. Trustees were informed about it and just shared the length. We didn't have any training, didn't have any meeting to review it because that is not our standard process. And so there was staff training. This has not actually been implemented, or at least the new procedure hasn't been implemented and will be this fall. There is the intent to have sessions to allow families and parents to ask questions leading into the fall so that they understand what the impact may or may not be for their child and what this looks like at the school level. And if there needs to be any accommodations, if there's something that, you know, they're not comfortable with, I would say that shared use of washrooms regardless of gender or based on gender identity would be one of the concerns that I've heard from families. Well, we do have a single-use washroom and that may be something that can be done to accommodate someone who's not comfortable with that. But that's the plan going forward. Procedures are not something that families or the community are consulted on. We consult at the policy level, which again, I know for trustee, from a trustee's perspective, sometimes it's frustrating that it's so up in the clouds, pie in the sky, like it's not detailed. I come from healthcare where these things are married together, where you set a policy and a procedure, but they are unique and distinct in our world where we're a governance board.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dawn, is the, and may I call you Dawn? Or should I call you, okay, thank you. Please call me Donna. Does it not state on the board website it is Policy 5.4?
No, no, it's a procedure.
It is a procedure. Okay.
To clarify perhaps, Dawn, the Procedure 5.4, or Policy 5.4 is the overarching equity policy and then the procedure that we're talking about today is the gender.
Sorry, can you clarify that, Graham? It's 5.4 references what?
So we have policies that, and then procedures fit within them, but the procedures are developed by staff and the policies are sort of approved. Not sort of, they are approved by the trustees. I don't know, Dawn, apologies for jumping in there.
No, no, so we have like policies that are set by the board and then procedures that fall under that. So it would be listed with the policy, but what you're speaking about is a procedure.
Okay, so can we go through some of the concerns that have been raised? I know as a trustee, your mandate is to communicate with constituents, represent their concerns and share those with the board and vice versa. One of the raised by some parents that have contacted my office was the safe and inclusive washroom/change room. So we understand what is in the procedure. The safety concern, potentially, and this is from a parent's perspective, potentially there could be a grade 8 biological boy or girl using the opposite-sex bathroom with a grade 2 biological girl or boy. Nobody wants to assume the worst-case scenarios, but why leave it to chance? Maybe we can address that.
And, you know, that is actually the identical question that I've received. So I'm assuming I've received the same email that's gone out to trustees. And it's a fair question and concern. I'm a parent with children in the system as well. I would start by saying that could happen now. We don't monitor washrooms. So if someone is choosing to go into a washroom that is not theirs, that would be against the rules and they would get into trouble if they're caught. But that can happen at any time. So there is a chance that that could happen. But if someone is identifying as a gender that's different than their sex at birth, you know, I'm not going to assume any kind of nefarious intent on their part. I think that should be a safe space. Again, if a family is not comfortable with that, we do have single-use or gender-neutral washrooms in our schools. And so that is something that they can direct their child to use instead of the standard washroom. We cannot discriminate based on gender identity and gender expression per the Human Rights Code, the Ontario Human Rights Code specifically. And we are mandated by the ministry to follow that. So this is a way that we are avoiding discrimination, but also accommodating if someone needs accommodation.
The number.
Can I ask a question? Are we allowed to ask questions during this or no?
No, we are not, sorry.
Okay, perfect.
Sorry, but you can put questions in if you'd like to add them to the, yeah, add them to our chat box and we can hopefully get to them if possible. If not, we can follow up. And I want to say that this is really an opportunity, what I'm hoping is an opportunity, where we can see more engagement between our trustees, our elected officials and our parents. Because as a parent, and a grandparent, I am also concerned about some of the policies, the changes, I should say, the procedures that the board is considering and will be implementing this coming school year. Let's talk about confidentiality, and I think that's the one that has been raised most by parents who've contacted my office. Why are parents being left out of this discussion? Where is it in the Human Rights Code? And I've looked for it, that a child over the age of, I think it's 12, that a parents are excluded from any of the decisions that this child tends to make or how they choose to identify while at school?
So this is actually something that's been in place since I was elected in 2014. This isn't new, but it may be newly apparent, I guess, as people are paying more attention to this procedure. And to be clear, procedures are always available online. They're just not something that people typically take time to go and read because they're very much for staff at the operational level. My understanding for that part of the procedure and what we've been doing over the past nine years is that if a student, you know, identifies as a different gender, would like to use different pronouns, if a student wants to use a different name. In the past, it was if a student perhaps identified as part of the Two-Spirit LGBTQIA+ community, but their family weren't aware. The school has a responsibility and the teachers have a responsibility to ensure student safety. So if there's any question that a student may not be safe at home if that information was shared, they cannot share it with parents and that's part of their professional duties. And so that isn't new. Ideally, I think discussions with the student would help facilitate allowing the student to have the conversation at home. I would say from my perspective, you know, given we have requirements around this as a system and in terms of protecting student safety, if they may identify something that their parents may not agree with and there could be consequences at home. I think the thing that we can do as trustees is make sure that parents are informed. They're informed of our practices going into this fall. And our goal is to have, you know, a series of sessions where we can have conversations or take questions and answer them, being mindful that we have to really do what we, we have to take steps to make sure that we're not promoting hate or, you know, having meetings used as a platform for hate. But there are legitimate questions that are framed appropriately that we can address. So from my perspective, making sure parents are aware of the procedure, making sure that they're aware that maybe they should be having some conversations at home about what does gender identity mean, what is gender expression? How do you identify? Do you, what are your pronouns? Like asking those questions of your child and having those conversations the same way we do when we get into sex ed curriculum in the upper grades, right? Like parents usually are made aware that that's part of the curriculum and they have those conversations at home because there's, of course, an educative role for every parent. But, you know, again, this isn't a change in our practice. It's just, I think, become apparent to parents that maybe weren't aware of it before.
Dawn, if I may, there's an awful lot of assumptions in what you just articulated, beginning with the fact that a child may be in danger or is, their safety may be jeopardized. If a parent is notified that the child is identifying as something different in class as opposed to how he or she identifies at home, who makes that determination? I mean, if a child is caught smoking, a parent is notified. Why, in something so profound, are parents demonized? And why is it that they are not brought into the discussion? Why is it the default policy or procedure is that they are, that this is being withheld from them?
And I think, I wouldn't use the term that parents are demonized. I think we recognize that the vast majority of families are supportive and would be open to conversations with their child. This is up to the educator and teachers for their professional capacity and their code of ethics. They have requirements to protect student safety, just like they are required to call CAS if they have any sense that something is happening that's, you know, harmful to the student at home. So I don't think it's, I can't speak for staff. I didn't write the procedure or approve it. But I think students are centered first in making sure that they are able to be their true authentic selves at school. And if there is an ability to encourage a student to have a conversation at home, the student can determine if that is as comfortable, safe space for them.
But if a teacher genuinely believes that a child's safety is at stake, is jeopardized because they are being, because of their gender identity, and shouldn't then this be brought to the Children's Aid Society? Shouldn't this be reported if there is a fear of safety? I mean, if you're fearing that a child is going to be assaulted or harmed in any way, as you just stated, that's up to the teacher to report this. Is this what's going to happen then if they really believe that a child's safety is at stake? Don't forget, the child leaves school at 3:30, 4 o'clock. They have weekends nights in the summer away from the safety, the protection of the school. Do they not identify as whatever when they go home as well?
And again, I can't speak to that. I think a teachers' union representative might be able to help answer that question because it's part of their professional judgment. And so I don't want to get into any area that I'm not, I'm not an expert in. I don't want to speculate and say something that's incorrect.
But could we find out for the parents who've raised it with me? As to, I'm not sure the procedure you're asking me to deal directly then with the superintendent or the Director of Education, is that who would speak on behalf of these procedural changes? Because this is a significant issue and it's one that parents are very genuinely concerned about why they are being, this information is being withheld from them. And I think bottom line, parents want what's best for their child and will support their child and they know what's best for their child. But to withhold this information from them is something that they're very upset about. And I think they have a right to be upset.
It is a fair concern. It is something that we are going to be, you know, establish in some FAQs and opportunities for further conversations so that families can understand, again, how this may or may not impact their family or their child. It's something that I think is, it would be helpful to have, will facilitate conversations, questions and answers with staff because again, this is in their domain. So that's something that we're planning to do heading into the beginning of the school year.
Is there any chance that any of these changes could, the changes could be brought about and that procedures could be modified?
So procedures, yeah, procedures are not set in stone. You know, they don't go through approval process the same way that a policy does. They go through, you know, a staff process where it is vetted at that level. But we often do see changes in procedures when required. I think, you know, we do take direction from the ministry. Currently, staff feels that this follows the direction from the ministry to follow the Ontario Human Rights Code. And I know it's not explicitly stated in there. But if the ministry feels that our board is overstepping, that's certainly where the minister could issue a directive or a memo and certainly provide some clarification for boards.
That concerns me because you're putting this back on the ministry. This is a decision by the board if the board is making. It's not in the Ontario Human Rights Code. The other thing that isn't in the Ontario Human Rights Code is the ability for boys who identify, want to identify as girls to play girls' sports. And there's, again, a number of issues from physical safety to the inability of girls to compete on what the parents believe is a fair level playing field. This is not, from what I understand, in the Ontario Human Rights Code. Why was the board interested? Why did the board agree to this, this particular procedure?
So this is actually being done in sports organizations across Canada and certainly in Ontario. The way it aligns with the Ontario Human Rights Code is we cannot discriminate based on gender identity or expression. In this case, if you identify as a gender, then you should, according to the Ontario Human Rights Code, as interpreted by staff and presumed legal because they would have had eyes on that. We would be discriminating if someone identified as a girl and could not play a girls' sport. I completely understand that there are concerns and that there's perhaps unintended consequences that could impact girls in particular. You know, my son plays coed sports and there's different rules when you're playing coed. You know, he plays volleyball, so you can't spike, you can't, you know, shoot ahead of a certain line on the court. And that's different than when he's playing strictly with, on the boys' team. And that is for safety reasons. So I completely understand those concerns. I think it's something that we'll have to continue to look at, but other organizations have been doing this for years.
But you've already stated that a coed sport has different rules. So if you've got a child who was born as a biological boy, now identifying as a female, playing a sport in high school, the potential of an advantage of physical difference could be very dangerous for a girl who, especially if there's physical contact. Are we waiting until there is an injury before we revisit this? And this is just going to be accepted and you're expecting parents to just move forward and say that they're in agreement with this policy?
Again, it's the procedure. At this point, we are following what is interpreted as meeting the Human Rights Code and not discriminating based on gender identity. So that is what is required of us and that's how it's been interpreted. That is what we have to do. So again, if there's clarity on that from any level, you know, particularly it's the Ontario Human Rights Code, so it would be the provincial government. If there's clarity on that, you know, that can come to the board. I think we do need to monitor the impacts and the way the procedure rolls out. And there may be opportunities to make adjustments, but that's all I am able to speak to at my level.
The other is about the pronouns and the parents are wondering why children are being asked to even address pronouns.
So you'll see that I have my pronouns on screen, you know, and it's something that, again, we cannot discriminate based on gender identity and pronouns are part of gender expression. And so people may have, I may have a preferred nickname. Dawn is my middle name. I prefer to go by that name and not my first name. It really isn't, you know, anything different than just respecting what someone would like to be referred to as or how they would like to be referenced. And so, you know, in this space, my pronouns happen to be she/her, which aligns with my sex at birth and my gender. But I put those there to let people know that this is a space, or at least in conversations with me, it's a safe space. So let me know your pronouns if they happen to be different from what may appear on screen. And so really, this is just creating an inclusive environment where if a student has different pronouns, they can share those and those are respected.
Okay, I'm getting, as you can see, I don't know if you're following the chats, but there are a number of questions that are, I don't think that the trustees are going to be able to answer. But I do get a feeling that parents are frustrated. I'm still frustrated with this and I don't understand why and how a decision that has such a profound impact on children was made in isolation of parental involvement. Is there an opportunity that we can meet with, with parents and with, who sets the procedure then at the board?
Staff.
Who's made, who's?
So there would be.
Like the hierarchy.
Well, the superintendent's associate director would be, you know, just under the director and then we would have system principals. We often have a team that would work on a procedure. There's often a legal review of the procedure because if we're setting out procedures that staff need to follow, of course, we need to make sure that we're aligning with legal requirements as a board. But this is all set at the staff level. Usually there's a team that works on a procedure.
So in your experience, what is the best process moving forward for parents to feel like they've had a voice in this? Because again, and it's not going to go away. I know that I will receive a number of email and phone calls after this conversation from the parents who feel, and I feel frustrated myself, that there seems to be such, it's almost like it's dismissive in terms of what parent's role in this discussion. And it is such a profound discussion. How do we move forward with this? How can parents now have a say in whether or not this procedure should be implemented as it stands or whether there could be some changes?
That's where I think the opportunities that we're setting up heading into the new school year where questions or feedback can be shared is going to be really important. The procedure is already established, but there may be opportunities to do refinements if needed or to provide clarity for parents. And again, you know, my goal is always to make sure that parents are included as partners in education. I understand how people are feeling. This was rolled out for staff and was shared with the public. I think it was leaked to the public. It wasn't not available. It was online. Like we do strive to be transparent and have our procedures online, but it's not typically someone would go looking for. So we sort of, you know, haven't gotten to the step where we're having those conversations and answering parental questions and making sure that parents can connect with their school. So if they have specific concerns, they can be talking to their school about, you know, what are the implications at your school? We know that it's quite a small proportion of students who are likely to identify as a different gender and choose to use that washroom, for example, or that change room. So like the impact may be much smaller than people are anticipating. And, you know, we've gone through this. If you'll recall, oh, gosh, 2011, I'm thinking, some of the shifts around thinking about our Two-Spirit LGBTQIA+ community and how we support them and accept them in our schools. We've come a really long way and it's taken time to get there. And I would say those conversations were just as challenging. We're talking about sex ed curriculum, you know, our health curriculum in 2014. That was a big election issue. People were afraid of it. They were worried about what it would mean for their child. They felt like they were being left out as parents. This is the same conversation happening again because it's something new and different. And I think as we bring people along and help them understand why this is important for this to happen, why it's important to accept everyone who they are, I think like our students who are much more accepting of this already, I think people can move along and I understand it's going to take time to get there and everybody wants to feel comfortable.
So from that, I'm gathering that this is just an exercise in futility that the decisions have been made and there really isn't going to be any sort of modification of the policies or procedures whatsoever, regardless of parental input?
Well, I think parental input is important because there may be opportunities for us to clarify, to communicate, to make sure that parents are included and understood, part of the discussion so that they can understand what's happening at their school for their child. Make sure they have conversations with their child as they feel they need to about these things. So I don't see it as futile to share feedback. I think it's important that people are respectful and mindful that when you're questioning human rights, you need to be mindful of how you frame that. Because if you're framing it well.
Dawn, hang on, Dawn. I don't think that that's the, I haven't had anybody frame it in a hateful way. Parents are just concerned that they've been left out. And it's not about not wanting to embrace and accept children who have, who identify as a different sex or regardless of the challenge. Parents are not here to, they want what's best for their child, but they feel they have been totally excluded. And to suggest that a child who wants to self-identify as a different sex doesn't need to bring that beyond the school day, whether it's on weekends or evenings or through the summer months, to exclude the parent from that could be harmful to the child. And I think that the bottom line is this demonizing, and I really do believe that this policy demonizes parents, to suggest that a parent shouldn't be told about their child's self-identifying differently at school is really, could be very, very harmful to the child. And I'm surprised that the board doesn't see that.
Yeah, and it's unfortunate. We've received communication and we've seen behavior that actually is quite harmful to many people in our community that would have a different gender identity or expression or maybe transgendered. So I appreciate that your emails may have been respectful and framed appropriately, but we've certainly received a number that are not. So that's where we need to make sure that we're allowing the conversation, allowing the questions, but we're doing what we can to mitigate and minimize the risk of harm to those in our community that we're trying to support through this. At the end of the day, it is our job to uphold human rights. And through the Ontario Human Rights Code, we cannot discriminate based on gender identity or expression. So how that's interpreted, you can see that in the procedure. I think there may be some wiggle room, there may be some adjustments, but this is happening across school boards across Ontario because we're required.
Well, not always.
If you look at different school boards.
Oh, no.
Like differences, but they are taking steps to make sure they're not discriminating based on gender identity and expression.
They're not excluding parental knowledge. The parents are still told about the policies. And again, I guess I have to go back to the one thing that surprises me and that is that a parent, I mean, do you not see the potential harm in not telling a parent? I mean, you're telling a parent if he's caught smoking, but you're not telling the parent if he or she wants to identify as a different gender?
And, yeah, as a parent, I appreciate that concern. I do. Because if that came to me in my household, I know that it would be a supportive space. But again, that goes, that's a piece that as a trustee, I can't really speak to because it goes to professional judgment at the teacher level. I think the important conversation that would need to happen is, have you let your parents know? Are you comfortable letting your parents know? If they're not comfortable, there may be a reason for that. And that just could be that the child, you know, like I can't speak to why a child may not be comfortable. It may not be worried about risk of harm, but that is something that the board has said, not the board, as the trustees, but the organization through the procedure is saying, we need to respect the wishes of the child. But I think those conversations and encouraging a child to share this with their parents or find out if they're comfortable sharing with the parents is part of what teachers would do. And again, they're going to use a professional judgment to do that. But again, I can't speak to what they feel their requirements are through their profession because there are specific requirements.
Do you know why the age 12 was used? It's not an adult. So I mean, if a child, as I said, if a child is caught with drugs or caught even skipping school, the parents are notified. But they're not notified in this particular case. Why the age of 12?
One, I think it's important to distinguish between people's actions and people's identity. Like those are two different things, right? So telling someone about someone's actions is different than, you know, they're talking about their identity. But 12 typically is considered an age where they can accept a vaccination. As long as a child is considered mature enough to make decisions, even in healthcare, there is not an age where parents can make decisions in terms of a child's treatment, for example. You know, it used to be that we'd say, well, you've got to be 16, but there is actually not an age. It depends on their mental capacity and ability to make decisions. So typically, we saw through COVID, for vaccines, around the age of 12, they are considered to be mature enough to make that decision. And the practitioner, the nurse, for example, would have to make that judgment. Is this child, are they at the average maturity level for their age? But a child as young as 10 could be considered mature enough to make that decision, whereas in other cases, they may be older. So I think that's just an average age and that's what we see used in healthcare as well. It's not a requirement legally.
But you're asking a teacher to make an assumption or a judgment on a healthcare decision?
This isn't a healthcare decision, right? This is, I was using that as an example of where age is used, but Graham, go ahead.
Dawn, I just wanted to ask a follow-up question. I'm hearing sex and gender used interchangeably, which I would love to have a conversation about that itself. But I'm wondering if a child who is about 12, 13, doesn't matter, were to incompetence tell their teacher that they're gay, would they, what would you suggest would be the next step for that? would be the next step for that?
Me?
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not a professional, I'm simply here to advocate on behalf of parents to have a role and a say. I'm not, I have, I am not suggesting for a second that I have the answers, what I'm sharing is parents' frustration with their lack of involvement in any of this, and this is a big, big concern with the parents who've reached out to me. I am suggesting that this was done without parental involvement, and I think that that should change. I think that parents need to be part of this, this whole process, they don't know how this was arrived at. It was, it was just leaked to parents, and now they're going into a school year trying to understand all these changes, but that's the issue. I don't know how that would be dealt with, but let's find out from people who have perhaps better understanding of their children. And there's another thing, I don't know what's best for your child. I think parents know what's best for their children, and they should be able to articulate that and be able to have a say in what's going forward, and something that is so profound when it comes to their child's health and identity.
Yeah, and I think you're totally right, and as Dawn has pointed out, I think there's, there has been some communication on our normal channels of communication through the website and everything, but it's not as overt as perhaps what people are looking for.
It was, it was rarely, I mean, it was, they just found out about it, let's be honest. And if it was communicated through a posting on a website, that didn't involve a lot of parental, you know, discussion, so the bottom line is, we're probably not in agreement on a lot of the changes, and I, and my basic intent from this, this discussion was to see if there is a path forward to have parents talk about their concerns. And the other thing that hasn't been raised is religious rights, and that is another issue that's being raised in, by constituents as well. They feel that their religious beliefs have been sidelined, so I think that there's an opportunity and a need for much more discussion before the board moves forward on this, on this procedure. And I'm hoping that perhaps, Dawn, we can facilitate something, and Graham, we've met with parents, Amanda, with the parents in our constituency, so that they feel at the very least that they've had some input in this.
Right, and.
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Amanda.
Sorry, sorry, Dawn. If I could just offer a little bit of information regarding the communication piece, because I think that a little bit, I had concerns with the communication piece myself, so when I reached out to board staff to ask about it, this actually was not a new procedure, it was an updated procedure, so I think that's where.